All right, good evening. Today is Monday, December 13th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Cynthia, second. Lori, all in favor? All right, great. And first item is Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, we'll kick it off with comments by the board. We'll just go around. Let's see. Lori, you want to start tonight?
Sure.
Tonight, did I catch you off guard?
Yes, no problem. So, okay. I'm just glad that the lockers will be in place soon. I think students are looking forward to that. And really just wishing everybody a happy holiday season.
Great, perfect. I'll go this way. Lori, you want to go?
Thanks, Pete. Yes, to echo Lori, wishing everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and hope everyone has a safe and wonderful holiday. I'd like to just thank the guidance. I was not here at the last meeting, but I did want to thank them for coming at our workshop. I didn't have a chance to listen. I actually read it. I didn't actually have a chance because it wasn't working on the television, but and maybe I can save that, but I did have some, just some follow-up questions. But we are going to have a club hopefully from that, and that's exciting. And I think that we're moving in the right direction as far as, you know, college preparation and really sort of thinking outside the box with bringing kids together and bringing guidance counselor together more frequently and doing things that are going to help them in their college preparation and high school. So, thank you for that. I really do. I do really appreciate that. And then the last thing I just wanted to say was thank you to Dr. Goodman and to all the administrators for the beginning of the school year and this year and for really just holding the fort down and doing a great job. So, thank you to everyone, and that's it.
All right, great. Teres?
I also am going to obviously repeat what everyone's just said about. I hope everyone has a happy, healthy holiday season. For people traveling, I hope you get to see friends and family that you haven't been with in a while. I think it's, everyone's excited. And I hope it's a good holiday season and a strong start to the new year. Just to follow up on what Lori was just saying, after giving some thought at the guidance workshop meeting, I think it's really a huge opportunity, thinking and talking to like people in different school districts through work, hiring college coaches to like pay that much attention to and give you that direct guidance is a huge cost to families. And so, I feel like the fact that we would be able to maybe not offer exactly that college coach experience, it's still enhancing the college prep. And I think it's a really important thing, and I'm excited about it. So, that and also what Lori said, they're very excited about the lockers. That's all I've been hearing about.
I'm hearing both the, either the block, why'd you take it away? Or thank, thank God you took it away. It's a 50/50 at my house.
The block is a 50/50. The lockers is like very exciting. I think mainly because Olivia is in seventh grade, so she never had a locker. So, it's the unknown. It's going to be a huge letdown.
Yeah.
It's going to be very anticlimactic. Because you know what? The buildup is what it's all about, right?
She'll be decorating, I don't know.
I think everyone probably agrees, though, that most of them don't like the earlier start time.
No, I know.
That's what they don't like, the longer day. But yeah, everything like a toss-up. Some people were disappointed with the block schedule going, myself included. But yeah, but so far it seems to be going good. And I guess going last, just to echo what everybody said, wishing everybody out there a peaceful and restful holiday season. And let's hope for the new year, it brings us some good things our way. That's what I'm hoping for.
Yep, 100%. Actually, I'm last. One more. But yeah, again, happy holidays to everyone. Happy New Year as well. The only thing I did want to add is I wanted to congratulate our varsity cheer team for getting a regional bid to Nationals, which is pretty exciting. I know they're very excited about it. And now they're kicking into full gear trying to fundraise to cover the cost because it's not a tournament that the school pays for. They have to pay for that themselves. They've been fundraising all year long, but obviously now they have, you know, a pretty big goal to try and hit. I know they're doing a clinic over the holiday break where they're going to teach the Cottle young girls how to cheer, and they're going to do like a showcase. So, that's kind of cool. They got a lot of participation in that already. And then I know they're also going to be doing a T-shirt sponsorship program in January or from now to January where they're going to try and get local businesses to support them and donate a little bit of money, and they're going to put their name or their business on the back of their shirt and wear that to all the competitions. So, if you're out there and you're a local business owner, you want to help, that'd be appreciated. I think it's going to be posted on the school's Facebook page. So, that's all I have. Again, once again, happy holidays to everybody. That's it. All right, so we'll get right into it. I think our next, our first item is the superintendent's introduction of student liaisons.
Okay, so we have great student liaisons this week. Let me first start by, so Matt, you're going to, you could just start walking up there while I'm introducing you. Our first representative is Matt Irving. He is currently a Tocco High School senior and is known by his teachers as being thoughtful and conscientious, and he brings his goals and desires in life to fruition by the virtue of his tenacity. He is well-rounded and has a wonderful blend of intellect and perseverance. In February of this year, Matt was profiled on WCBS Radio for their segment on Difference Makers. And that's what Matt is. He has so many volunteer activities. But in this particular time, Matt volunteered with a nonprofit, a nonprofit music school called Song Captures, Inc., and he has been giving virtual guitar lessons to a group of younger musicians in order to sharpen their skills during COVID. Some of his other volunteer efforts include Midnight Run and Habitat for Humanity. Matt is also a member of the Stock Club and is a guitar player in the Deus Pad. Matt?
Thanks, Ms. Goodman. I just want to say we have officially transitioned back to an eight-period schedule, and we're going to be starting and ending the day at the regular times. So, that means that we're starting the day at 7:42 in the morning and we're dismissing at 2:30. We're also transitioning back to lockers like you guys just spoke about. I also wanted to say that last week, the Tocco PTA hosted a career panel for trade jobs, which was a big success because they got to hear from a lot of different professionals from a variety of different trades. The College Board just released the PSAT scores for the 10th and 11th graders, and they can access those on collegeboard.com, I mean, dot org, I mean. The Tocco concert bands and jazz bands will be having their concert on December 15th in the auditorium, and it starts at 5:30 for the middle school and 7:30 for the high school. We're also starting up a coding club after the New Year, and we are very, we're looking forward to starting that club. The freshman class is planning a gingerbread, gingerbread house contest, and the sophomore class is selling hot chocolate gift jars for the holidays. Lastly, we sent out an email last week about signing up for snow angels, and this is a great opportunity for kids who need service hours or they're, or they're looking for something to do. That's all I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say that Matt had left our school for a private school, and he decided to come back because, why'd you come back?
It's a great community. You know, you get to know everyone very well. It's a very supportive community. You know, people always have your back. It's great to be here.
Good move, good move, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
We're so glad you came back. We add so much to our school. At our next student rep is Isabella Pepperman. Isabella is a Tocco High School senior. Isabella has been a student body president in her freshman, junior, and senior years. As student body president, she helps organize fundraisers, donations to the community, student activities, and she advocates for her fellow class members with administration and teachers on a variety of issues. She is also president of the Italian National Honor Society, where she enjoys the exploration of Italian culture. Isabella is a member of the National Honor Society also, where she helps organize food drives, clothes drives, and donations to cancer foundations. Both after school and during the summer, she is a counselor at TASK, where she independently tutors 24th grade students, and she also volunteers at the Tigers reading to Cubs at Cottle. Isabella is a varsity cheerleader, and she was named All-League, All-American, and this year she is captain of the team. As a volunteer for the Tocco Youth Cheerleading Association, she is an assistant coach for two cheerleading teams ranging in age from 10 to 16 years old and helps teach them new skills and choreographed routines. Amidst all her community service and activity, Isabella manages to maintain a high-grade point average and has been on the principal honor roll each year, and she was inducted into the National Honor Society. She wants to study psychology or teaching, right? Or teaching in college? And she heard from her first college today, but she's waiting to hear from a variety of other colleges, and they're all very strong schools. Isabella?
Thank you. So, I'm talking about the sports teams today. So, our sports teams are filled with super high energy and school spirit coming off of a grand homecoming and successful fall season, such as the football team. Winter season sports have officially begun to take effect, meaning basketball season is now in action. Both our girls and boys varsity basketball teams have a winning record of 2 to 1. The girls' team is coming off of a win against Perry Slade Prep, and the boys' team is celebrating a victory against Putnam Valley. Our modified girls' and boys' basketball teams also have games starting up next week. We wish them good luck on a, on a successful first game. With immense interest demonstrated this year, bowling is now back. Our varsity bowling team is beginning their matches at Home Field Bowl this season. The girls' team has a record of 3 to 1, and the boys' team has a record of 2 to 1, so both are winning records. We wish, we're wishing them luck as they try to reach sectionals this year. Last year, they were unable to go. Tuck Fit is another opportunity for students to remain active during their off-seasons or even just for fun. This club is run by Mr. Pappas and is a fun way and it's very safe to exercise, to exercise and experiment. Competition cheerleading has finally made its way back to Tocco and is proving a success. Receiving a bid to the national championship at their last competition, the cheerleaders are eager and hopeful for a successful season. Practices are filled with hard work to prepare for future competitions. I'm beyond excited for what the rest of the season will bring for everyone. The support has been incredibly high, and I wish the best for every team. As captain of a varsity cheerleading team, I would like to represent an activity we are partaking in. I'm going to piggyback off the what Mr. Casson said earlier. We have this fundraiser for our teams, and you have a T-shirt, and every local business can, can either donate $100 or $50, and $50 gets you your name on the back of a shirt, and $100 gets you a name, and it's going to go on this big banner in town, and it's also going to go in front of the high school. We are eternally grateful for the assistance and backing we have received and hope to receive during our experience. Specifically, we want to thank Mayor Andino and the Tocco Ho Board for supporting us in this endeavor. With your support, we can reach as many local businesses as possible, proudly represent our town, and reach our fundraising goal. Our fundraising goal is $30,000. Thank you for having me, and have a nice night.
I just have a quick, I'm sorry, quick question. Pete, you mentioned Facebook. Where else can you find the information about, for a business or anybody wanting to donate? Facebook, I know, Mr. Casson mentioned. Is there another place?
You can reach out, we have an Instagram page, Tocco Ho Varsity Instagram. I think it's called, it's just called Tocco Cheerleading, I believe. And you can also reach out to Mrs. Casson, Fran Casson. She has, she's kind of running the whole thing. She's in charge. We have like a booster club. So, she's in charge of that, so you can reach out there.
Great.
I worked for her tonight. I said I worked for her tonight.
How are you guys, because I know I donated to one of the calendar 50/50.
Oh, yes.
So, how, how well are you guys doing?
We're doing actually super good. We had the calendar fundraiser. We have the clinic coming up, as mentioned before. And then we also have like a FlipGive fundraiser, which, FlipGive is like an app, and everything you buy, a lot of, a lot of websites are like involved in this, and everything you buy, you get a percentage back. So, like while everyone's been Christmas shopping, you've just, we've just been getting a lot of money back, and we've gotten almost like $300 from that, just from like 1% off of a $12 purchase or like something like that. So, I think, I don't know. I'm trying to think of the amount, but I don't know the exact amount, but I think we should have a bunch already.
Good. I'm sure you'll get your goal.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you guys. Strong comeback.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the, the support in the community has been great. They did a car wash in the beginning of the year, so it's, it's been good. They've been working hard. They've been working really hard at it. Yeah, I think you guys got, you're on pace, I think, now for a little bit over 20, so you know, there's some more work to do, but you guys are getting there.
Great, hopefully.
You guys can feel free to go do your homework. Don't stay the whole time, but thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Good night.
See you tomorrow.
All right. Impressive kids, as usual. Okay, that brings us to comments by the superintendent of schools. Dr. Goodman?
Good evening, Board Trustees and community members. We hope that you are enjoying the holiday season. And just seeing our kids here today, I'm just so incredibly proud of them and all their perseverance, how they've come through this really difficult time, and still the school spirit is so high. And I really thank the parents, the students, our staff, because we're not letting this let us down. Our middle school and high school return to the traditional eight-period day. Thank you to the teachers for their partnership in responding to the pandemic and for supporting innovative practices within the departmental program. The Tocco Ho Eight-Period Day again is back in place for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. For next year, our middle school and high school guidance counselors will sprinkle in a week of block scheduling each quarter. This is similar to the plan we had proposed for this year before we returned to the block schedule. These four instances of block schedules in the 2022-2023 school year will give us the opportunity to launch some learning experiences that will benefit from a longer period of time, especially in learning environments like our new library, which will be focused, a great focus on the innovative redesign in our capital project. We learned a lot from our experiences implementing a block in the midst of a pandemic, as we discussed last week. But we will continue teaching our teachers more innovative and redesign our teaching program within our eight-period day also. Meanwhile, Mr. Tobin and the PTA, as you heard, hosted an engaging and informative career panel for our high schoolers on Thursday evening. Thank you to the PTA for your partnership and all your great ideas and for the volunteers who participated. The panel consisted of speakers from several trade professions, for example, a hairdresser, court reporter, electrician, and a contractor, who shared their experiences. The video has been shared with students and will undoubtedly provide them perspectives into their future plans. We are all celebrating student accomplishments of the recent weeks. This includes our middle school debate team, who held their own in the highly competitive NYDL League. Tocco High School junior Fabian, Fabian Duchateau competed at the NISM All-State Symphony Orchestra playing upright bass. Our boys' and girls' varsity basketball teams both celebrated wins, and our varsity competitive cheerleading team qualified for Nationals. They will be headed for Florida in March, and we're very excited for them. In the past weeks, we met with our Tocco Equity Team. The Technology Committee has begun to work on the district's technology plan, which will be the focus of an upcoming board workshop. We host a parent-teacher conferences at Cottle, and Tocco Middle School, Tocco High School concert bands, and Jazz Ensemble will perform on Wednesday, December 15th. Lastly, everyone is reminded to please donate warm winter garments to support the Tocco Middle School National Junior Honor Society Clothing Drive. Drop boxes are by the main lobby in the middle school, high school. As we look ahead to winter recess, I hope this season of lights, family, and celebrations brings warmth and restoration. I also encourage us to take an opportunity to reflect again on the past year and how wonderful our students have been doing. As we move into 2022, I am hopeful that things will calm down and Tocco will continue to lead the way. This is due to our perseverance, our grit, our always looking at data, and our unwavering sense of community. I wish you all a happy and healthy new year.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, next is comments by our business manager.
Hi, yes. So, I just would like to say that last week, also, the middle high school cafeteria opened up the serving line, so now students are able to go through more of a traditional serving line and pick their lunch. There, we are allowed to, we can now offer more selections, and they can also purchase snacks and beverages at the middle high school level. So, that's really exciting for the kids. I'm hearing that they're very excited. Meals still remain free for all students till the end of the year, but now they can purchase snacks and drinks at the middle high school. We are still working on a plan for Cottle to start having them purchase snacks, probably starting in January. There's just a little logistical stuff with that. So, that's just exciting, so.
What about the middle school, high school cafeteria? Would that, would there be purchases starting in January as well?
That's already started.
Oh, that's already started?
It started last week. Yes, so the meals are still free, but they can purchase snacks, à la carte items, and beverages. At Cottle, it's a little different. They never really went through the serving line, so we're trying to work out a way that they can preorder a snack if they would like chips or cookies. So, we're just working on the logistics of that, and hopefully they'll be able to start that in January.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's exciting. We're hearing good things.
Anything new on the capital project?
Not right now. Everything was submitted for the Cottle project, and we're still working on some details for middle high school, and the facilities committee will meet again after the New Year.
Great. Awesome. All right, great. And next is our first prediction of the audience for non-agenda, for agenda items only. Anybody? I know Ms. Millie wants to speak. Anybody? Not, no? Millie? PTA?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Susan Millie. I'm the PTA President. Thank you all for your service. Appreciate everything that you guys do, Dr. Goodman and all the volunteers and the business office. You guys do great work and just really want to express gratitude. The PTA has been up to a lot in the last, since the last board meeting. Our Student Support Committee hosted a, sorry, I have to refer to some notes here. Dr. Andy Styx, who's the Director of the Gifted and Talented Enrichment Center, visited on the superintendent's day of election day to work with the first and third grade teachers to help them, help provide coaching for differentiation of students who, whether they struggle or are gifted, so to speak, and we were happy to have that service provided when the students weren't in session. We also hosted our general meeting in November with Mr. Chris Keough as our guest speaker. We had a number of families on the line with him in a Zoom call, and there was some lively Q&amp;A, which led to further interest expressed in having additional meetings. So, parents were able to hear about what the great work that Mr. Keough does in the community and learn a bit more about the, his role. We also hosted, I'm not going to go into the whole thing because it was mentioned already a couple of times, but we did host the career panel for our high school students to learn about trade jobs, and we want to thank the volunteers who donated their time to prepare and participate. Some of us are contemplating career changes because they made it sound so much more interesting than we even realized. That was hosted by our high school committee, and the high school committee is also hosting a serial drive in the lobby in this building. So, this will be up through, there's a box in the lobby collecting through December 23rd for donation to Hope Community Services in New Rochelle. Our Health and Safety Committee hosted an event also online with a guest speaker who's an expert in treating adolescent anxiety called Resiliency, Courage, and Independence in an Age of Adolescent Anxiety. And that was very informative. We know there's a lot of struggling going on among our youth, and I'm really happy that we were able to offer this service to families. Our Math and Science Committee has an item on your agenda tonight, which I hope you'll consider. We are interested in donating some equipment towards the outdoor science classroom, which was requested of us by Mr. Greco, a middle school science teacher. So, we hope you'll give consideration to that. We would love to provide enhancement for that. Our Ways and Means Committee hosted our Cottle Boutique. We were happy to be able to bring that back to the students so they could shop for holiday gifts for their family members, and want to thank all the volunteers who made that possible because we need that to be well-staffed. And that was also a fundraiser for the PTA, so we appreciate the contributions. We also had Giving Tuesday. We did a little campaign to encourage people to donate to the PTA, and we raised $260 that day. And I also just want to call attention to our community encouraging everybody to buy local because it helps our tax, it helps with taxes that benefit our schools. I think Lee Lu gave a report last year that we lost considerable funding, if I'm not mistaken, from a drop in sales tax. So, it is important that we not just leap to the lowest price online, but actually support our local businesses because it helps our economy and our schools. And then lastly, I also just want to put a shout out for year-end giving to the PTA. I know a lot of people give to charities this time of year, and our PTA has had to skip our spring social event, which is our biggest fundraiser of each year, and we missed the last two. And we're, you know, we're really trying not to ask much of the community, but we do need to ask a little bit. And all of the money that we raise goes to programming. We have almost zero overhead. We pay for QuickBooks. We pay for an accountant. We pay for insurance, and that's, and a locker, and that's it. We have no staff, no, you know, nothing. So, at all the money that we raise goes to your children. So, I do hope that everybody will remember us this time of year and know that that money's being well invested. Thank you very much.
What's the best way to donate, Ms. Millie? How do you do that?
Sorry, yeah, we have a website, tuccohpta.com, and I'm glad you reminded me because I also meant to say that we've really been populating that, and some of these events that I mentioned here are being archived on our website. So, for people who missed the webinar, you could go to the website and see a playback. We're trying to record them as we go. We can, you can make donations. You could become a member of the PTA. We're trying to keep everything in one place.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll dive right into our agenda, which is pretty light again tonight, so it should be pretty quick. First off is our consent agenda. A motion to approve consent agenda items two through three. Teres, second. Laura, any comments or discussion about the consent agenda? All in favor? And then we have our business of the board. First item, whereas by resolution, wait, is there one? Yeah. Whereas by resolution adopted at this, at its meeting held on November 15, 2021, the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District declared a walk-in cooler owned by the school district that is in disrepair to be obsolete. And whereas the Board of Education Policy 6900 authorizes disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment and supplies owned by the Tocco Union Free School District through a board-approved public online auction site. And whereas the absolute walk, obsolete walk-in cooler was the subject of a public online auction from November 24, 2021 through December 9, 2021, conducted by Auctions International Incorporated. And whereas, when the auction closed on December 9, the highest bid for the obsolete walk-in cooler was $270 submitted by L. Jados of Pine Island in New York. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education, Tocco Union Free School District, authorizes the acceptance of the bid in the amount of $270 for the purchase of obsolete walk-in cooler by J. Jados, I'm sorry, L. Jados of Pine Island, New York. And to the extent applicable, authorizes payment of the, of the portion of the commission owed to Auctions International Incorporated by the school district. And be it further resolved, at the superintendent of schools and the school district's business manager are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to sign all documents required to implement the purpose of this resolution. Do you have a motion? Laura, second. Teres, any discussion on that?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just curious. Why do they want it?
I was thinking the same thing.
No, I really was. Because I'm like, it's $2,000 for us to dismantle it and get rid of it, and somebody wants an obsolete, broken cooler.
Parts?
Parts, maybe? We'll talk about it.
Scrap metal? Scrap metal, parts?
There, let's just fold.
It's worth.
Yeah, probably parts, I'm sure, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, parts, scrap metal, yeah.
Interesting.
Oh, yeah, scrap metal.
Oh, yeah, scrap metal.
We can't, we can't, um, you know, I don't know, tear it down and, and get the money for the parts. I mean, what gets more money, the parts or the?
I think it would cost, it would cost us more money to get rid of ourselves, right?
It would cost about $2,000 to have it dismantled and taken apart. It's like built into the room, and then the way we would sell it for parts is through auctions, through a website, through Auctions International. So it's probably worth more to someone together than if we took it apart.
I see.
All right, all in favor? All right, next is approve a side letter agreement. Resolved, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the side letter agreement dated December 10, 2021 by and between the district and the TTA, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do you have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teraz, any discussion? This is for, um, the stipends, I believe, to set up the, um, the new college cafe club, right?
Do you want to say anything about it?
Yeah, if you want to say anything.
Because I know people have mentioned that not everybody, um, listened in to what was here for the last meeting. This is a club that will take place at lunch and/or after school for both, uh, for juniors and for seniors. Um, it will help them, again, going above and beyond what guidance counselors can do, or college counselors can do during their regular school day. The biggest distinguishing factor between regular school counseling and college cafe is that college cafe will provide students with substantial help on their essays and help them with their final packaging on the overall application. While school counselors do that, too. This will be more intensive time. And college cafe is not just for students looking to apply to the most selective universities. It's also ambitious students who want to work towards a better version of themselves, families with special circumstances that need more than the average school counselor help, weak writers, or kids who don't know exactly how to write the essay to get extra coaching, and what makes a good expository writing, and the, and this and more. And for juniors, it'll be like a boot camp to start in the spring. So we know that our seniors are finishing up with this, but we would like, we feel that juniors will get great value in starting all of this early, so that their senior year is not when they start working on this, but really their junior year, where they start to really review how to write an essay, review the supplements, um, work with navians, and refine their resumes. Resumes are really important. Uh, helps them write the rest of their application, how to write their bric sheet in a, in a good way, that they can use not just for colleges, but when they give teachers letters of recommendation, they need to be really specific on what they're telling the teachers. Teachers know them in the classroom, but you want the teacher to know the types of things that those students were telling that they themselves do. And also keeping students on schedule for deadlines is really hard, the college application process. As those of you who have older kids know, it's really, really time-consuming. It's hard for families. It's very stressful. Some kids have problems with executive functioning and really getting parts of their, um, application done. So it really hits the whole gamut of what students need to get this really very personalized help, help above and beyond, um, what our counselors can do within a, within a day, and really give a real personalized touch, and really, the applications are very important part of the process.
That's good. It's a, it's a good idea. Um, I know I had a couple of questions for, would you answer some of them? But one more follow-up I wanted to ask you was, just to clarify for me, the stipends that we're going to be, um, awarding for this, are they going to the, to our guidance counselors, or are they going to teachers that are, that are going to help out with this cause?
Well, it all depends on who applies to it. It will be posted. I mean, I've done, I've had.
It could be for anybody.
It could be. You know, I've, I've, you know, it's how, you know, I'm not a guidance counselor, but myself, um, did some private counseling, you know, people who really know the process. I mean, I would think most likely it will be our counselors, at least to start. Um, but it, it is, um, and why we're calling it cafe is we would like kids to be able to bring their lunch, or maybe we could have a little pizza or a little snacks for them, too, as they are working within their, um, college applications.
And it'll run throughout the entire year, fall semester?
So, and, so, you know, we have to pro-rate it somewhat this year. Um, each guidance counselor will be working separately with groups of kids. For the fall, it's really for the seniors, the fall and the winter, getting everything together and packaging it, and then starting in the early spring, this boot camp for our juniors.
If you don't mind, I just have a question about, um, so you mentioned juniors and seniors. Um, one of the things that, that, and I didn't have an opportunity, if I was here, I would have asked, and, and maybe they spoke to it, but, um, you know, the club sounds great. I think we've, we've, we've had other things similar where, you know, we have an idea of something that we think would be enrichment, and we offer it. I think where sometimes it falls down is that we don't actively go out and recruit, or, or sell it, or, or make kids aware, or families aware that, hey, this is a really good thing, and you should think about doing it. So my question is, is there a way of whoever's going to do it to have something where they come into the classrooms and reach the kids there where they, where they have to be, right? I mean, you know, recruiting kids, eating lunch with their friends versus sitting and talking about college is a tough sell for probably some kids. But I think if you go in and start those relationships even, because a lot of times in I've a junior, you know, and the guidance counselors are wonderful, but a lot of times it's come, come by, come see me.
Right.
You know, I mean, I can't tell you, oh, my son has not gone by, just, I mean, they just don't, they're just busy. So I'm just wondering, can you incorporate that into the day?
Right. So, um, the guidance counselors, or if whoever does it, will be meeting with students on a regular basis, and students will be invited to come, too.
Okay.
It's not just a voluntary thing. And some students who we know really need it, that's why.
Right.
Will be, um.
Okay.
You know, again, there are some families or some students that just don't have any help at home, and that's where we're also using our federal funds to help.
Right.
Help, help with this.
And how often is it going to be?
It's going to be twice a week, for juniors and for seniors.
And during, you're saying during lunch?
Either during lunch or after school, depending upon the student's needs and schedule.
So twice during lunch and after?
So each guidance counselor will have 20 hours each semester of the two semesters. So that's like 40 hours between the two of them and the small groups.
So how many kids could potentially take advantage of this?
Any kid can take advantage of it. They'll make, they'll make the groups depending upon kids' needs.
So it'll be like a small group instruction type thing?
Yeah.
And then I guess, I didn't think of what Laura just said, but it's a very good point because we, I just had a freshman meeting, so, um, at the very beginning.
You're already overwhelmed.
But they were very lovely, and.
Yeah.
I have an open door policy, but my son doesn't, you know, he's not gonna take the initiative to like go and say, hey, you know, he's just not going to be that person. So, and maybe, and maybe he's not a struggling student, so I guess.
No, it's also for kids.
Somebody who's doing well academically and not gonna kind of, how are we going to engage the kids who are not going to take advantage of the open door policy?
Right, right. And they, and they'll, will come up with a process for that. That's important because part of, there's going to be a form to fill out where we're going to see who's going, not just for the counselors or whoever does this, to keep track of it, but also for the administration to see where kids are and what they're doing internally. And it's also for the kids who are trying to get into the highest level schools, too.
No, I'm sure it could, anybody can benefit from this at any level, for sure.
And parents can call up, too, you know, well, again, I've did this at another school once before. It, I'm sure it will have an evolution, but we will also, as administrators, be working closely with the counselors, who I think will be the first to, to kick this off.
Does everybody have to fill out the form?
Does everybody have to fill, everybody who goes to clubs?
I don't know, you're just talking about a form.
No, I'm just saying that we keep track of clubs to make sure that they are.
Oh, your form. I thought it's the kids filling out.
It's our form, yeah.
Yeah, make sure the participation is.
Right. Make sure that the participation's there, there's equity of participation.
Is there flexibility, like, because a lot of kids in those grades tend to have less classes in study halls. So is there any flexibility for that? Because I do imagine, I know that most kids, they don't want to give up lunch, or, and after school, they're busy doing things. I'm just wondering, that's, that's why it's a hard sell.
Yeah, it is.
It's a hard sell because when you're doing it. The only time kids get to socialize is that time, and they're dying to get out of here, most of them.
Well, what we're hoping is that as kids come, they realize how important this application is, and that it's not something to take lightly. And, you know, something that we as parents and as administrators really need to get across to our kids.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I think the key, though, is to make sure you're advertising it to the parents.
Right.
Because I think if parents know that this, that this resource is available, they're going to make their kids go.
Yeah, did you meet with them today? Were you at lunch today?
Right, yeah, make sure you go to morning, and you go do this.
And when they say, did you apply anywhere yet? Where's the application? You better go, either, you know, you're not going out this weekend, or you're going to go do this.
That's right. You don't get the keys to the car.
Yeah.
I've had children by the time, that's why. I care so much about this.
Just, I just, my last question. One of the things that some parents have asked me about, when they, when we talk about college things, that I've heard of is in the private schools, they have college class. Like, they have an ele, it's not elective, it's a class that the kids go to. And I'm not saying re, this is a nice step in, in, in a direction of making it important enough for the kids to, even, I would say even at the end of 10th grade, start to.
Right.
Start to bring them into these clubs, because then they're sort of mentally getting ready for their junior year, you know?
Right, yeah, I agree. And this, this could really grow. But kids will have folders, they'll have work that they're supposed to do, you know.
But that class is, it's sort of a career slash college, not just about college, college, college. It's kind of that conversation that, you know, they're learning algebra and calc, I mean, they're, they're just cramming out, you know, have a class that's about, you know, a bank account, a college, Kurt trades, you know, something where the kids go, and it actually is meaningful in terms of where they're going after high school, right? And that's what this parent was telling me, that I think Fordham has it, I think Holy Child has it, you know, a lot of the private schools. So, you know, we're small. We always say we're small. We're like a private school, which I think to think about.
That's a really good point.
Right?
Is that something that in those schools of guidance?
They have, actually, into the curriculum, they have a career slash guidance, not guidance, career college class. Um, and I could find out more about it, but I've heard it a number of times from parents, that that's where they, they feel with their kids as they go, going through the high school process here, that, that communication, again, the club is a great step in the right direction. But you're either paying somebody outside, and you're that parent that's all over it, or you, or you're, you know.
Well, we, we hope that we are taking, at least with this beginning of this, that we're taking the place of, number one, parents who don't have to now pay for somebody on the outside, parents who can't afford to pay for somebody on the outside, parents who, you know, struggle to help their kids, or their kids don't want to really work with them. You know, filling out it, the whole college process really, for most kids, is something that they need collaboration on from adults. You know, they haven't made it really super kid-friendly.
I think having it as a class, though, is a really good point.
Oh, no, I think it's, I think it's.
Because that's something that is mandatory, like an elective that you sort of.
Because I think they're looking at, like.
Some of them electives they take are not of any use.
I'll ask.
They're just taking them.
Well, let's see, let's see what happens.
So that would be useful.
Is it like an all-year long elective class, or is it like a, like semester elective type thing, like health or whatever?
So for, it's a semester in the spring for juniors, boot camp, like a boot camp, like let's, let's get it all together. So kids will really have a head start on it so that it's not that crunch senior year.
Yeah.
You know, where you're exploring also what you want to do. And then, um, for the seniors, it's getting it all together in that. And, and things change, too, senior year. Kids may put in other applications, and it really is exploring, of course, that whole thing, what you want to do with your life, and also knowing that it's not a forever commitment.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you.
So if, if, if the, um, guidance counselors are the ones that get the stipends, I'm just curious, like, how do they take that into their day? Because they, they, they don't, they don't follow, they don't follow a, like a period schedule, do they? The guidance counselors, they kind of do their.
Right. So they, so this would be like when they would normally have lunch.
When they own their lunch, right.
Or when they would stay after school to do this.
So they're, they're break time.
It can't be part of their day.
That's be part of their break time.
It has to be something, it has to be something extra.
Right, right. Makes sense. Okay, all right, well, I'm sure you'll figure it out. I mean, it's a, the concept is obviously very, very good. Um, it's an important subject to fill. That's good. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, accept the donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education to accept the donation from the Tuckahoe PTA Math and Science Committee in the amount of $700. Do you have a motion?
Let me talk about it a little bit.
Cynthia, second. Teraz, uh, any comments? I know Dr. Goodman has a few comments about that.
Okay, so I want to say, I know that Ms. Millie already said some of this, but the PTA once again has shown their support and generosity to our schools, and specifically here, the middle school, high school, science department. They are donating $700 to go towards the purchase of materials for the outdoor science lab at the middle school, high school, that will address the needs for overhead shade and to create a divider. The materials include an outdoor divider panels, which will provide barriers between outdoor classroom space and the first floor offices and classrooms, and an extra-large patio umbrella to provide student and staff with protection from the sun's UV rays. This donation will help create an innovative space for learning coupled with the microscope that they donated back in October. We are very excited to see the outdoor lab come to life and are most thankful to the PTA for the generous support and partnership with this and everything else. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Millie. Thank you to the PTA. All in favor? Okay, and lastly, we have our personnel recommendations. Resolved, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves personnel action items A through F as outlined below. Do you have a motion? Teraz, second. Laurie, any discussion?
I just had a question about the tutoring. So, can you just explain what, what that is?
Okay, so, um, I think we spoke about this, was that last week or the week before? Last week? Okay, so we're doing, um, TLC, Tuckahoe Learning Center, is something that we're doing to narrow the achievement gap, again, with our federal funds. So we're looking at specific students who have been struggling, you know, and learning. Um, so we had at Cottle, which our position is, we are all, we're doing a program at Ecap, um, so where students are, a lot of our students are after school, and also one at Cottle after school. And then we're moving to, now we're looking for a, um, a place to do it in, in the village for the middle school and high school. We're talking to the library right now.
No, that's what I was going to ask, is are we looking into middle school, high school?
Yeah, and we're, I don't want to say anything yet.
All right.
I think we talked about it at our previous workshop, the one before.
Yeah, it was the one before.
The data workshop, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's all I wanted to know, was, were we looking into for middle school, high school?
Why wouldn't we do it here, like after school? Why wouldn't we do it here after school, like the kids are here?
So we do have kids that are Ecap who are in here. So we're doing Ecap and we're doing here.
Oh, okay, got it. Oh, we are doing both?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, just, I don't know how that works. Okay.
All in favor? Okay, that brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any items at all. I can just remind you to keep to three minutes, please. Thank you.
I can't even tell who that is, with the hat and the, oh, all right, it's you, okay.
Debbie Vasquez, 48, Central Drive. I have two questions. I know I came in a few minutes late. I might have missed the locker conversation, but my son is in elementary, he's in fifth grade. Their school bags are really heavy. So I don't know, I heard something last year. I'm not sure if it's true or not, but were there lockers that were supposed to be ordered for the fifth graders so they could prepare for middle school? Because they're switching classes and they're taking their bags with them back and forth everywhere. So, like I said, the bags are very heavy. Some kids have wheels, but I was hoping that, you know, maybe if it was ordered, and maybe it stopped with COVID, if you started ordering them again, or, I don't know. I heard that they were ordered, and then they, you know, they stopped with the order because of COVID. So just wanted to know what was going on with that. Second thing is, um, some of the parents come to learn the last few hours, that there was 14 to 15 teachers that were not teaching today in school. So just wanted to know if there was anything of concern that we should know, um, how long that they're going to be out, um, and, uh, if there's anything that, you know, that should be of concern to the parents.
Okay, so, um.
Thank you.
I don't know about the lockers, per se. Um, Ms. Fox, was there, was there a lockers that were supposed to be ordered for?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know about that. I don't know that that was stopped because of COVID. Um, and as far as, you know, we have an uptick in COVID in the district. I can't really talk about individual teachers or anything like that, but there is an uptick, especially in, um, middle school, high school right now. So we're doing the best we can. We're looking for substitute teachers, if anybody's interested, you know, and has a background in teaching. Um, but they've been doing a good job also. The teachers are covering for other teachers right now. And, you know, we kind of expected this, not quite like this, after Thanksgiving, and, um, you know, hopefully, you know, after Christmas, it's not going to be like this, too. But, you know, this thing, you know, is coming in, in waves, um, so.
Well, I know you, I know you can't speak about specifics, but is the number 14, 15 correct?
I don't think, I don't think that's the number. So, uh, do you remember the number?
I don't, I don't.
I know, because we just put it on the form, so I can't say. I think it's half that, but I'm not sure.
And then how long, oh?
The students have come home, and some teachers, none of their teachers were in today, so with all the parents, you know, asking their children, the, the names are roughly, what we have is a list, at least 14.
All right, well, I could, last week there was, maybe there's more added to it.
As of today.
Yeah. There's a lot, there are a lot of teachers out there.
And, and then how long would they be out?
It all depends. Okay, so I can't say what teachers have. There are different things, okay? So there could be teachers with positive COVID cases. There could be people who are really actually ill from something else. We know that there's flu going around like that.
I was gonna say, there's also really negative.
There's also people that have a personal issue. We have a couple of teachers that went on leave of absence because they are having babies or, you know, something like that. So all of these things are kind of colliding together. And we've, I give the, the secondary school a lot of credit because there's been a lot of people covering each other. And, and at Cottle too, we've had a lot of teachers out.
For, for those teachers.
Teachers who are positive.
Right. How long would they be out?
Um, it all depends, um, when they were first, you know, what, they have, the Department of Health goes back and figures it out, you know, when they first start had symptoms and then they're out for the appropriate number of days.
Yeah, but it also depends how sick they are.
Right.
So if, so if teachers are vaccinated and have no symptoms and there are contact, then they're not obviously, um, out for that.
Right.
But if you are positive, it also depends on, you know, how long you'll be out. But it still is, it is a certain amount of time. And it's not all COVID related. But it is a hard time of the year right now.
Yeah, that's obviously, you know, a little disturbing, having that many teachers out. But, um, okay. Anyone else?
Well, she's coming. Is there any way for the elementary school to mitigate the carrying of the backpacks between, um, classes? Because I, I do, that, that is an issue. So I just, is there a way that, I don't know if, I don't remember if, I'm trying to remember a few years ago now when McKenna was there, but didn't they have things on the back of the seats or something?
Yeah, but it was different. They didn't change as much as they do now.
So now they're back.
They change for every period now. When McKenna and Olivia were there, it was like half and half.
Right.
They like cohorted like English.
Exactly. So we're not departmentalized for fifth grade?
We are fully.
We still.
Yeah. So they, it's, science is one, social studies, math, English. When we were, two years ago, it was math and science. You were in for like double periods.
Right, exactly. Yes.
You know what I mean? It's not like that anymore.
So is there any way that, that that can be addressed, um, so that there's not so, so much that they're carrying? Um, because they are little.
They are little and those, they are heavy backpacks.
Yeah, they are little. So, uh, maybe there's that something that maybe we talk about.
I think even with the lockers, it's an issue. I just want to say, because I know that I hear the complaint up, up, you know, up here, that there just isn't enough time to get from, to your locker, get your stuff and get to the next class. There, so most of them carry it because they just don't have time. So I don't know if that's something you want to look at in general. There's like, even though they have lockers, they're not using them because.
Are they just using it in a way for the jackets?
Yeah. And there's no time to, for it to get from class to class.
It's worth looking into.
They feel like they're running constantly.
Maybe the teachers can organize less in the book bag.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and everything's.
Yeah. And, and, you know, they're, we'll talk in, administrators will talk about it and see why kids have to carry that many books either.
Yeah.
Right. So we'll, we'll pick that up. We've, we've touched on that, actually.
A whole lot of people hunchbacks, little ones.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Lisa July. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you for everything that you guys continue to do. Um, I just was watching the board meeting at East Chester that happened a couple of weeks ago, and, um, they brought something up that I thought was interesting. Uh, we all know that there's an executive session that's coming in, uh, January, and there's an Assembly Bill, um, A8378. There are lots of things that are up for discussion and, and debate right now, but that one in particular speaks to the mand- the mand- uh, mandating of vaccination for all school age children. And I would like to know where the board and the superintendent stand, um, as a school district, as a community, what, you know, where, where do you stand? Will you be writing letters of advocacy for choice, um, for your school community as, uh, East Chester is doing and other districts throughout the county? Um, so that's one thing that I just wanted to ask. Um, the other thing is with regard to, um, the normalization of this conversation on the school, in the school premises, uh, between teachers and students. I'm still having children come home advising me that their teachers are disclosing to them their vaccination status, their vaccination schedule, how the vaccine makes them feel, how many days they anticipate being off because they're getting a booster. I find all of those things very troubling because I don't believe that teachers should be discussing. I, I, this is something in private. We should not be moving towards normalizing this conversation. And I know since I'm up here, you know, quite frequently, you have discussed this with all of your staff. So I just want to say, I love all the teachers. I, I have such a history here, um, but with all due respect, it's not fair to my children or to any child to have to listen to that. And I would ask that there be some disciplinary actions that take place, that they are held accountable. And if my children do come home and articulate who that is, I will be sharing their names at the next meeting. Um, and I'd rather not do that because I, like I said, I have huge respect and I think that everyone should be entitled to their choice or their decision. Good, good for them. I just don't think it's appropriate to share it in a classroom setting. And, um, I also appreciate you writing in your emails. I saw a few blurbs at the bottom and that lets us know that you're, you know, that you hear us. A lot of people are afraid to come and speak about this because it's so divisive. I have nothing to lose at this point. I've been called every name in the book, so, um, here I am. But, um, the one thing that caught my attention was that it was insecure about their vaccination status. And this, I don't think that anybody at this stage of the game is insecure.
I agree.
Okay, thank you so much. It's something that we've, you know, we've decided as a family and we're very secure about it. We just don't want to have to articulate it or explain it or justify it. But thank you guys again. I really appreciate everything that you do and happy new year, merry Christmas. Thank you.
Anybody want to respond today at all?
Well, first of all, I don't, I didn't mean insecure like that. I think I meant that people were trying to make students not feel, from, from, from comments that came up here, that they weren't feeling like they were being supported. That's why I put that in those emails, so parents can remind their children. Can you hear me?
Not really.
No, I said, I said, so I just put in those emails to remind parents, to remind their children, not to make other kids feel badly, I guess was the wrong word, about their vaccination status, because that's what I thought people were coming up and saying that. And, um, no, nobody should shame anybody on either way of any family decisions that family makes. And it's an individual family decision, basically, is what I was saying. I don't know about that bill, though. I really, I have no idea about, about that bill at all. So.
You said it's A83.
It's A8378. And that is something that's up right now. I want, I want to say January 5th, they're back in session. If anybody knows about it, please, you know, feel free to speak to it. But it's that they intend to, there's a lot of bills up for discussion. But that one in particular is that mandating vaccination for all school age children. And they, the bill has been sponsored. I want to say his name is Ripinowitz. And, um, it would be great if we could join other surrounding districts in taking a, you know, taking a position that we advocate for choice. And, um, you know, I would love to know what the board and the superintendent, what, what their position is and, and how they feel about how it affects our community.
Okay. Well, first I'll say, I, I think your comments about teachers talking about vaccination status, um, or vaccinations, I agree with you. I don't think that's appropriate at all, in my personal opinion. Um, I, I think that's, that is something should be private and I think the discussion should be kept to the individuals. So, so I agree with you on that. To the extent that that's happening, I, I hope that'll be addressed because I, I don't, I don't agree with that either. Um, as far as what's, what's coming up and what our position would be, I, I would, I would want to give it a little bit more thought, to be honest with you, and just think a little more. Maybe talk to our Health and Wellness Committee a little bit. Um, I have some initial thoughts on it, but I, but I want to reserve, um, any comments on it. So I kind of think about it a little bit more. I mean, at this point now, unfortunately, I think we've kind of been in a little bit of cruise control, um, with, with just accepting what, you know, after the last variant, the, um, the, the health department sort of came out strong on their mandates and we've just been following along and been somewhat on cruise control, I think, and just kind of been going along with it. So, um, I can't say that recently I've given it a lot of thought. So I, I just want to do a little bit of that before, before I comment.
I just want to also add, if you have anything, if you feel that there's some issue with a teacher, I would appreciate it if you would let the principal know. We're not allowed to talk about, um, staff at board meetings. And that is one of the rules.
Okay.
But please, please let your principal know, um, if you're feeling uncomfortable. Of course, go to the teacher first. I mean, that's the best way to go, but if you feel that you need to go anywhere else, go ask the principal about that.
I, I, my understanding is that all the teachers have been, like, there was a blank laced conversation and it was discussed.
Right.
So if it's still continuing to happen, then it's a.
Well, if it's an individual teacher, then it'd be great to, um, to bring it to administrator's attention. You know, you might want to talk to the teacher first. I usually always tell parents, speak to the teacher first, because sometimes kids have a story that may not be, you know, people hear things differently. Ask the teacher. Then if you're not satisfied, then, you know, go up the ladder.
It's kind of tricky because that can have a reflection on your child.
Right.
And their relationship in the classroom with that child. Um, it seems like that should be top down, you know, for, as a parent. There should be a policy. It should be adhered to. That should be it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then as far as, as the bill, I actually just tried to Google it. It seems like there is some kind of bill that sort of is in committee. It's not on the floor yet, but it does seem to say what you, what you say. Um, again, I would also think that, you know, again, I don't feel like I'm a medical professional. Um, I have said all along, I, it was an individual choice, but if things, if the Health and Wellness Committee or, or school physician would, I'm just not ready to say anything about it either.
I wouldn't want to talk about the Health and Wellness Committee and also revisiting that, because to me, that sounds like an echo chamber of the same things over and over again. You don't have any diversity in there. And, you know, quite honestly, I don't know that I want to rely on the Health and Wellness Committee.
So let, let me just say, I'll say this, I don't want to carry away from the, from that question. Um, you know, I, I'm, I will say that I am very, very much for choice and, and I, and I believe in choice. But the reason why I hesitate to really come out on a position on this is that I also, at the same time, and I know that the superintendent's been doing this all, throughout this entire pandemic, is also trying to balance strategy that keeps as many kids in school for as long as possible. And, you know, so that's what I want to kind of care. So me, as an individual, off the cuff, I believe in personal choice, without a doubt. But in, in terms of what the well-being is for the school district and keeping, and, and keeping kids in school, um, I want to be a little careful about how we approach that and do what's best for the entire school community, if that makes any sense. I want to get into this bill a little bit and see what's actually being proposed. So to me, you know, I think, I think all along what we've been doing is, I know Dr. Goodman's been trying to do everything she can to set us up, set ourselves up and line ourselves upright with what the Department of Health is saying so that we can keep as many kids in school a, as we can. And I think that's an important strategy. That's our job, uh, as a school district. So.
Right.
It's balancing those things out is really what I'm, what I'm hesitating on. Um, but I, I, I certainly believe in choice, without a doubt.
I think that the mandate would actually eliminate a lot of children. Um, so, you know, you want to balance it so it benefits the whole community, but if you have 30,000, you know, if you have so many, so many people in a, in a, in a county who are going to pull their kids out because of that mandate, how is that really serving all of the community?
Good point.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would, I mean, I've been vocal about it before. I'm also pro-choice. I don't think it should be a mandate. Um, and to your point, I, I work in the city and I have seen a big increase of, a lot of, uh, parents who have pulled their kids out, who are either homeschooling or requesting home instruction and things like that. So that is a fear of mine and I still do feel that way. Who knows? Down the road, will I change my mind?
The vaccine is mandated in schools?
Huh?
The vaccine isn't mandated in schools?
I know, but they, people have pulled their kids out.
But not because of the vaccine mandate?
And now, well, there's many reasons why, but I'm just fearing of that's the direction it's going.
It's mandated in the city now if you play sports and if you are in the orchestra and things like that. So it's absolutely.
And he's pushing to maybe.
We're here.
Yeah.
So.
Um, I, you know, I, I, if I just add to, to what Pete said, I, as before, I've always, um, I'm in, in favor of individual choice. I think parents should make that decision. I think it's between a parent and a child, a physician and their pa- their patient, and it shouldn't be, um, from a, from a government perspective of a top down for that. You know, the bill, I, I also have not looked at it. Um, I think as a board, it's, I think it's a good idea to have conversations, um, and have a well-rounded kind of information, you know? I think that, um, you know, when you talk about health and wellness, I think a good, maybe an advocacy committee and groups of different voices having this conversation and then coming together with, here's what, here's what we came up with or here's what our thoughts are. And so it's very hard from just a small, you know, sort of, and you call it an echo chamber, you know, we're five. And, um, but we are here to represent everybody. And I think that, um, those that are involved and, and do watch, and I do very much read and watch things, although this I haven't read yet, but I absolutely send emails. And I, again, encourage people out there to do that, right? You know, you really have to, you have an individual responsibility, as much as I might individually make a decision for my child, I also have to individually get involved if I am concerned and actively email and, and have phone calls and things to your representative. So that's something I always advocate for. But listen, I, I, I really appreciate any parent that gets up in front of a microphone and, and, um, whatever position it might be to, to, um, discuss things that are hard to discuss and to make us have conversations that sometimes are, um, difficult and sometimes divisive, as you said, but it's important to have them. So I, I just want to thank you for always, you know, taking that, um, risk. And, um, and I think that it's worth having a conversation. We can even have, you know, side meetings or we could, right, we could do an executive session and really have a conversation and come up with a game plan, you know, of, of going forward for next year. How do we get more voices and have maybe, other than just the Health and Wellness Committee, have other committees that come together? I think that's not a bad idea. I mean, that's just my thought off the top.
Yeah.
I think having other committees is important, so we hear from everybody. But I also think respecting people who work and are experts and are scientists and really understand science and medicine and not saying that, you know, my opinion on like how to educate or be an accountant or whatever would not be equivalent. It's not where my expertise lies. And I think we also have to respect people who are at the table, who have expertise and who study this. And the committees are not like a group of people who are just there to agree. I mean, people applied and, you know, got on different committees for different reasons.
So we tried to make the committees during this whole reopening to have people who had backgrounds in the area. So the, the committee that was about communication were people who worked for Google and they worked as HR people. And they gave us, I mean, I, we didn't meet a lot, but that's why I think our communication has so much improved, because they said, you know, you have to go to social media because that's where the parents are and you, you know, and text messaging and, you know, those kinds of alerts. We did learn a lot. And then it was the same thing with the Health and Wellness. And I really think if, if the Health, if anybody who's a physician or a nurse or has some kind of background that wants to join, it's always open to get other members. Um, I think the voices in all the different areas should be people who have backgrounds, because for us to make decisions as educators about kids' health, I think is, is a slippery slope. Um, I don't, I, I know you hear that bill. I have not heard about it at all. And I'm always on the phone with the county executive. It doesn't, I don't think, and this is just my personal opinion for what I'm hearing, I don't think that we're near that. I, personally, I don't, because I think I would have heard a lot as a superintendent, a lot more about that. And I'm on lots of calls. And you know how people throw out bills all the time. I don't, I don't think it's at that level. I really don't. And if I hear that it is, I would certainly let you all know about that. I think there's more things out there looking at keeping kids in school with programs like tests to stay, which we're looking at as a district so that kids can stay in school right now.
And not quarantine, right?
I'm getting, um, information. I'm trying to get binax tests so that kids don't have to quarantine. I think there's more of a push to come up with creative ways so kids can stay in school. And that's really coming from our Department of Health. That's the kind, and our county executive, I'm not seeing what you're saying as, as being on the table right now. Um, I think, you know, things can change. And I also think that people think that the virus is going to go up and then it's going to go down again. And another thing that I think maybe we could do is look at, and superintendents want this, is some metrics as to when it's down low enough that we can, especially with the vaccines available for people who. that we can, especially with the vaccines available for people who want it.